If I could have everyone's attention, please. We would like to begin the meeting and we certainly want to welcome you here to our December Board of Education meeting. One of the things that I just want to share is, and it is very important to us, the board is here and always customarily recognizes our students and our student achievement. And so, we have many students here from our elementary school as well as our high schools. So, we would like to begin the meeting so that we can start to recognize those students. We have awards for them. So, I'm going to ask everyone to please be very, very respectful and patient as we begin the meeting. And as I said, the first part of this meeting is to recognize our students. We see that some of you have taken steps to fill our aisles. And although that is fine for the very brief moment, we will be calling students and principals down to the microphone. So, I'm going to ask you to just make sure that you make your way over so that those people who are here to be recognized and that we're here to honor, which are our children, have that opportunity first, okay? So, with that, Mrs. Terrell, Madam President, we're ready to begin the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close private session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here are none. Motion carries. Do I also have a motion to close the agenda meeting?
Move.
Second.
That wasn't, that's fine.
That's fine, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here are none. Motion carries. I'd like to welcome everybody to our December 21st, 2015 Regular Meeting of Lacey Township Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 7th, 2015, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Please all join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I say that sounded awesome, all those voices? That was amazing. Now I should make you all sing. Want to sing next? No?
This is grand.
And now I'm directing the board to, we'll get done some of our old business and then get to honoring all the students. So, directing everybody to page 13 is there a motion to approve the agenda meeting held, the minutes for the agenda meeting held on November 16th?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the board minutes and appropriate attachments for the regular meeting held November 16th, 2015?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the private session held on November 16th, 2015?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Now turning to page 36, do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $6,416,583.10.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, on all bills except the 28 noted that I'm going to pass along in a list to make the meeting shorter.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
No.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Now turning, oh, and next, do I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution?
I'll move that present, Mrs. Terrell.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Now turning to page 37, Mr. Stein, do you have a report at this time?
Nothing additional at this point.
Thank you. And next, we have our student representatives. Who would like to go first?
Me.
Ms. Lindsay Dyckoff?
Thank you.
Alright, so the freshmen are selling $10 travel mugs. Please contact Ms. Sullivan if you would like to purchase one. The sophomores are selling $30 stadium blankets. You can contact Ms. Taskin if you would like to purchase one. And the seniors are working on prom colors for the SGA Executive Board. December 19th was Winter Formal. It was for freshmen and sophomores. It was from 7:00 till 11:00 p.m. Over 280 students bought an admission and we hope to make this a yearly tradition. Battle of the Classes started on December 17th and it runs to the 23rd. November 9th to the, first place gets 50% of the money, second place gets 30% of the money, third place gets 15% of the money, and fourth place gets 5%. Each event earns each grade points and the events include dressing up in spirit weed, good deeds competition, food bank food drive, hallway decorations, banners, chants, and the final Battle of the Classes game on Wednesday, which includes a three-legged race, dizzy bat race, tug of war, a grand relay, and the most school spirit. Students sign up with their grade advisors to participate in the final Battle of the Classes and we have a food bank fundraiser where teachers and staff will be paying $5 or making a food donation on December 23rd to make, to wear jeans. Our December 2015 Matthew Blum unsung hero is Joe Serrano. The unsung hero for the month of December is a dedicated student who is involved in many activities. He is always kind and cares about his peers. His ambitions for the future are set very high and he expects to reach every goal he sets. Not only is he in the STEM Academy, he is enrolled in all honors and AP classes. The student works very hard to maintain his GPA and class rank. Joseph is in the top 5% of his sophomore class. In addition, he is an interact officer, which keeps him very involved in the community. He is in Association Against Drugs and Alcohol and a part of the Future Business Leaders of America. Not only is he involved in clubs and academics, he is a part of the winter track team. The student has aspirations to become a doctor after high school. With everything he does, he will reach his goals. The Matthew Blum unsung hero for the month of December is Joe Serrano.
Joe, is your family here?
Yeah.
Stand, wave something so we can acknowledge you. Thank you for your reports. Wonderful as always. Dr. Anthony, would you like to provide us with a superintendent report?
I would love to start tonight's superintendent's report by introducing Mr. James Hantshu, Principal of Lacey Township High School.
That's the best applause I've gotten. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Dr. Anthony, thank you very much. May I invite the board to come around so you can see our presentation? It's always a great privilege of mine to share with you our Students of the Month and for this month's special, of course, December, I'd like to introduce to our first Student of the Month, Navatani Kulei. Please come down. And if I may introduce her family, I know they're here in the first few rows, so you guys would just raise your hands. How about applause for that? Alright, so I'd love if you would roll their tape, please.
Hello, I'm Mr. Hantshu, welcome to Senior Spotlight December, where we meet our outstanding Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Navatani Kulei. Navatani is in the top 10% of the class, involved in STEM program, and is a member of a number of activities including peer mediation, EDA, and here is a cool case. Navatani, had a quick look at your activities, common thread seems to be you like to work with people. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, you are so involved in numerous clubs inside of schools such as EDA, which I'm actually on the advisory board this year. Here are some cool kids, information, and they're just really good programs to get involved in, and I like volunteer my time, whether it's inside of school or outside, to help others and like try to make an impact on their lives and better the climate and school community as well, so.
That's excellent. You also are a varsity athlete in tennis and swimming, and you hold a school record in swimming. Can you talk about your athletic career at Lacey?
Yes, I joined tennis freshman year, it was my first year applying, and I'm actually, I made varsity my junior year and senior year, and actually I've been swimming all my life. So, I joined freshman year and I made varsity, actually made freshman year, so I will be getting a four-year letter of varsity.
And you're part of a record team also, aren't you?
Yes, we broke a medley relay, I think it was my freshman or sophomore year.
And what do you, what's your swim?
I swim a whole bunch of strokes. My favorite is the 100 stroke, I swim the 2AM, sometimes I'll swim the 105, and I do a lot of relays, which is like freestyle.
Alright, busy inside of school, what do you like to do outside of school?
Well, when I'm not doing my homework or working, I like to just lay back and hang out with my friends or family and keep it low-key, so.
Alright, the biggest question we ask seniors, and this is the question we ask you, future plans, what are your future plans?
Well, I do tend to go to college. I would like to study engineering. Right now, I'm undecided on what kind of engineering, but that's what I'm going for.
Alright, what schools are you looking at?
USC, which is in Southern California, Texas A&amp;M, Villanova, I applied to Lehigh, Penn State, so it's kind of all over the place, but we'll see where I end up.
They're all excellent schools, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll be lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Navatani, on your Senior of the Month.
Congratulations. And if you go far, like Southern California, make sure to come back to Southern California. Thank you.
Alright, the next student, we'll be right down here, Brendan Walsh. And if they introduce his family, I know they're, oh yeah, they're over on the side. Please wait, congratulations.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight December. Now joining us is Senior of the Month Brendan Walsh. Brendan is ranked eighth in his class and is heavily involved in sports and activities here at Lacey. Brendan, can you tell us about some of the activities and sports you're involved with here at Lacey?
Yeah, some of the sports and activities I'm involved in, I'm in NHS, I volunteer for two blood drives, I have done two beach cleanups with NHS, I'm involved in SGA, I go to SGA meetings, and then also I'm involved with soccer and swimming. I did lacrosse my first two years, but after last year, I didn't do lacrosse anymore because my schedule was a little too packed. But yeah, I've done soccer for four years, I got a varsity letter this year in soccer, and then I started swimming last year, and I got a varsity letter last year and this year, so that's exciting.
I guess you had a great soccer season this year, I really enjoyed watching you guys play.
Yeah, yeah, it was really fun to see the boys succeed, you know, really fun to be a part of that whole team and that whole family and group of kids, those are really great group of kids.
You come from a storied family line of military personnel, and you express an interest in moving forward in that direction. Can you tell us about your interest in serving in the military?
Yeah, I come from a family along, like you said, a long line of military servicemen and women, a couple cousins, a couple uncles, my dad was in the military for four years, he was in the Navy. So, I think that's part of my motivation to be in the military is to step up and serve my country like those before me. Also, I'm really patriotic, and I want to defend the values of this nation because I think they're very important.
Well, we're very proud of you for taking that step, thank you, and congratulations on that. What do you like to do outside of school?
Outside of school, on the weekends, I usually home with my dad and I usually hang out with my friends, and then during the week, I swim, I also do swimming instead of like home and stuff, so.
Alright, so we know your path's going to take you down the military line. What path do you want to try to plan to get to that goal?
To get to that goal, I plan to go to a military academy, I plan to go to the Air Force Academy specifically. I was accepted into the Coast Guard Academy right before Thanksgiving, so it was a very exciting experience for me, and I just see it as one step closer to the goal of becoming a career military officer.
Congratulations. Well, Brendan, congratulations on your selection of Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with Vocational Senior of the Month, Mike Muller.
I have the Lacey Township and School Board, we want to thank you and thank you for your commitment to the military and whatever grant you go into, MURIs, I think it's going to be the MURIs, but whatever. But be safe and thank you.
Alright, our Vocational Senior of the Month, Mike Muller, is not here tonight because he's taking his EMT certification test, I believe, correct? No, Mike, right, okay. So, he's going to be with us in January, but ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, we have some excellent, excellent students here at Lacey Township because of all of your efforts and the families. Thank you so much for allowing us to work with these students. Congratulations, and we'll see you next month. Thank you, Dr. Anthony.
So, we have many students here in addition to many of our staff, which is very exciting. And so, to begin tonight, I would like to share a little bit of information with you with regard to some of our students who have really taken a project and a learning opportunity and maximized it to its fullest extent. I want to share with you that our students this year participated in the Stock Market Game. It is an online simulation of the global capital market that engages students in grades four through 12 in the world of economics, investing, and personal finance, and prepares them to be financially independent futures. More than 600,000 students participate in this program across 50 states, and the Stock Market Game has reached almost 15 million students since 1977. Student teams rather are given $100,000 to invest in companies, and they do that investment based upon the research that they have. So, it is my pleasure to try to find Principal Brewer? Ah, I see him now. Principal Brewer, if I can ask you to take the microphone and share with us who you have from Lenoka Harbor School tonight with you.
Good evening, everybody. If I could, can we please have our SIFMA team come on down? As they come down, just let me tell you a couple things about them, we'll introduce them all in just a moment. They took first place in the SIFMA team competition. This is, go ahead. Just let me tell you a little bit about it. This accomplishment is not measured by a one-dimensional standardized test, it's not measured in a one-day snapshot, but this is actual real-life learning that's conducted over a period of time. Our students shined while they were competing in this area, authentic learning, where the skills had to be utilized, real-life applications, they had to learn from their mistakes, they had to go through trial and error, they also had to work as a team. So, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mrs. Marcus and our team to tell you a little more about it and make sure you guys are nice and loud, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. And good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you. My name is Jillian Marcus, and I'm the new gifted and talented teacher over at Lenoka Harbor School, and I'm very honored to be here with a fabulous group of gifted and talented 4th graders that have competed in the New Jersey Stock Market Game and came in first place in the state of New Jersey. In the Stock Market Game, we were given $100,000 virtual dollars to invest in companies that we believed in.
Some of the strategies that we, that we used to put our portfolio in first place were diversifying, buying low, attracting companies on Yahoo Finance.
We invested in various companies, but there are four that really stood out.
Two of the companies were Disney and Mattel. We invested in Disney because we know their brands, movies, and theme parks very well. As for Mattel, they manufacture Barbie, Hot Wheels, American Girl, and Fisher Price. Is that a powerful company or what?
We also, we also invested in Google and Amazon because they are both very popular companies in our digital world. We were confident that our investments would grow, especially around the holiday season. Remember, if you put a dollar in your piggy bank, it will still be a dollar tomorrow, but if you invest your dollar in the stock market, it can grow to 10, 100, or even 1,000 dollars.
Or you could lose it all because there's something called risk and reward.
But, lucky for us, our investments grew. Thank you again, everyone, and just to introduce them one more time, this is Haley Austin.
Congratulations and thank you. I need all of your help.
Thank you. Caroline Liebman. And Brody Sager.
Do you want to wave your hands or stand up?
Thank you so much. Incredible, awesome kids, thank you. And continuing in the spirit of awesome and incredible, it is my honor to call down Mr. Eric Fiedler, Principal at the Forkett River School, and his school took second place in the Stock Market Game. So, Mr. Fiedler, who joins us here tonight from Mr. Fork Riverada?
Thank you, Dr. Anthony. And good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out tonight. I'm very, very proud as well to introduce our second-place team of Wall Street Wizards, and their dedicated and inspiring teacher, Mrs. Black. So, at this time, I am very proud to introduce Mrs. Black, Kayden Schubiger, and Lilly Sol. Please come down.
Our names are Lilly Sol and Kayden Schubiger. We are from the Forkett River School. We came in second place in the Stock Market Game in the Southern New Jersey region. Our $100,000 Stock Market Game investment gained $1,435 over the eight-week period. That's a 1.44% gain.
We bought six stocks, three winners and three losers. Luckily, we diversified our investments and ended up picking Amazon, which gained $3,800, which is a 23.46% gain, and Apple, and Apple which gained $1,242 or 7.46%. Our losers were Hershey and Best Buy. We learned a lot how, a lot about how the Stock Market Game works. Playing this game has helped us learn how to invest in a good stock.
We would like to thank the SIFMA Foundation for supporting the Stock Market Game here in New Jersey.
Congratulations to Lilly Sol. Congratulations to Kayden Schubiger. And their teacher, Mrs. Black. Thank you, Dr. Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Fiedler. Thank you, Kayden. Thank you, Lilly. Incredible. We are so proud of you. And Cedar Creek took fourth place in the Stock Market Game. Principal Renasco could not be here with us tonight. Mrs. Joni Donahue joins us, Supervisor of Cedar Creek. And Mrs. Donahue, who's here with us from Cedar Creek?
Well, we have the Stock Crushers with us tonight. They include Broden Conley, Isabel Heim, Ethan Hawke, Casey Madison, and Madeline Rappensberger. And of course, we also have Liz Hudler, who is our GNT teacher. They're proud of our team, the Stock Crushers, and they'd like to just let you know what their, their stocks were. If you could say your name and just what investment did you make?
My name is Ethan Hawke, and I invested in McDonald's and Apple Inc.
My name is Isabel Heim, and I invested in Lockheed Martin Corporation and Goldman Sachs Group.
My name is Casey Madison. I invested in the stocks Harley-Davidson and Toyota.
My name is Madeline Rappensberger, and I invested in Walt Disney and...
My name is Broden Conley, and I invested in ExxonMobil.
Over the nine-week period, our students researched and accumulated enough information to form their own portfolio, which they then walked away with a virtual $1,938.94. Congratulations. And we have Ethan Hawke. And we have Isabel Heim. And we have Casey Madison. And we have Madeline Rappensberger. And we have Broden Conley. And we also have Liz Hudler.
Could we have the parents from Cedar Creek team please stand or wave so we can acknowledge them? And I would like to ask the Forkett River parents to stand up and wave.
Thank you, boys and girls, for making us so proud, and to your teachers, thank you so much for helping our students achieve such great success. At this time, it is my honor to bring Mr. Hantshu back up to the podium because he has some additional students that we want to be recognizing tonight along with their two awesome teachers, Mr. John Zataro and Mr. John Cuzon, and under the guidance and leadership of these two incredible educators, at the LEGO Robotics Competition held at Ocean County College, out of 20... out of twenty-nine total teams in the competition, Team Lacy took three incredible spots with Team Syntax Error, Team Fuzzy Logic, and Team We Made It. I love those names. So I'm hoping that you and your colleagues can tell us a little bit more about that competition and what prizes we took home here for Lacy Pride.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anthony. In the Ocean County Tech Prep Robotics Contest, there were eleven students that participated. All of the students in the competition from Lacy Township placed and will receive scholarships totaling four thousand five hundred dollars from Ocean County College for tuition and jumpstart program. So congratulations. And once again, we may have the two teachers to come down, Mr. Sotero and Mr. Cuzon. They're the masterminds behind this competition from our school. Well, Mr. Cuzon's here, so that was a good pleasure. Okay, for me to introduce to you the Robotics Race Challenge. And yes, first place, Team Syntax Error. I don't know if Syntax Error was good, but we were. And each of these students received a five-hundred-dollar scholarship from OCC. And I will start off with Jacob Trauber. Tyson Trauber. Sarah Edgecombe. And Jacob Zepzby.
Congratulations.
Don't go anywhere. Stay there, guys. All right, one more round of applause for... And parents, we'll recognize you at the end, so please stand by. Second place is Team Fuzzy Logic. And each student will receive two hundred dollars scholarship from OCC. Dan DeAngelis. Next is Carly Miller. Colin Meehan. And Jules Mahfee. All right, ladies and gentlemen, once again, second place, Team Fuzzy Logic. Our first-place team in Robotic Design Challenge, getting five hundred dollars each from Ocean County College. First-place team is We Made It, and we have first Garrett Hope. Next is Spady and Wind. And last but not least, Student of the Month, Brendan Wall. I'm doubling this. Please pause. All right. Oh, boy, that's a big line here. Okay. Everybody smile. All right, one more time. That's a keeper. Thank you. And may I ask each parent, please raise your hand so we can recognize you. Congratulations. Thank you, students. Excellent job. Keep up the fine work. Coach, nice job. And thank you, parents. Dr. Anthony A., yield the floor back to you.
So in addition, nice gentlemen and ladies, thank you, Mr. Hanchu, Mr. Cuzon, Mr. Sotero. Thank you. At this time, it is again an honor and a privilege to share with you that not only do we recognize our students, but our staff as well. But tonight, we're going to be recognizing one of our staff members because of the people who stepped up and recognized and nominated this person. And Mr. Doperty will be sharing with you a little bit more. But I want to take a moment and thank the bombing staff members because you recognize an incredible talent and a dedicated colleague. And very often, when we see nominations, it takes time. And very often, people don't give the time. But these people did. And they are Michael Ryan, LTA President, Deborah Sloan, sixth-grade teacher; Jacqueline Subsy, Special Education Teacher; Carrie Hodgson, sixth-grade teacher; and Lori Anzalone, sixth-grade teacher. Because, but if not for you, we would not have the privilege tonight to recognize Shani McPherson, who is the NJEA Ocean County Educational Support Person of the Year. Shani is going to join Principal Doperty over at the podium. And Mr. Hanchu's going to take some pictures for our Twitter account right now.
Good evening, everyone. It's an absolute privilege to be here tonight and to have the opportunity to recognize one of our outstanding paraprofessionals, Mrs. McPherson. You know, reflecting upon this honor, two big thoughts come to mind. We are incredibly, incredibly fortunate to have Mrs. McPherson as a part of our school district. Additionally, I think like Dr. Anthony was saying, it takes a great deal of time, energy, and effort to go through the process of nominating someone for this particular award. And that speaks volumes to the amount of professional respect within our school, within our district, for Mrs. McPherson. So on behalf of Mill Pond School, and I think I speak for everyone within the district, it's an honor to have you with us. And I would just like to give Mrs. Subsy an opportunity to speak as she gets the privilege to work with Mrs. McPherson every day within her classroom.
Good evening. In order to effectively meet the needs of our special education students in the classroom, paraprofessional support provides assistance, allowing students to work to their maximum potential in their classroom and grow within our schools. Blessed as I am, I work with two educational support personnel that are amazing. Patty Holer, Shani McPherson, and I work as a team each day, providing students with a program developing academic, emotional, and social growth. If it were not for their leadership and support, both inside and outside of the classroom, students would not show the tremendous growth when they do when they're at Mill Pond. This evening, we're here to congratulate Shani McPherson as Ocean County's Educational Support Person of the Year. Shani works so hard each day, supporting our students. She diligently finds another task to make the most of each day. With a hundred percent enthusiasm, her support includes shadowing the students to their classroom, outside of my room, making sure they're able to meet the requirements of each class, with projects, note-taking, test prep, and reinforcing appropriate social behavior. She extends her learning outside the classroom, taking classes, working on her college degree, while continuously taking advantage of the professional development experience offered through the Lacy Township Schools, Summer PD, the Regional Professional Development Academy, Parents of Autistic Children, and taking online workshops to keep her up to date on the ever-changing needs of our learners. In addition, she supports our students within the program and the many clubs that they join, ensuring they're able to have positive experiences, once again reinforcing the social expectations that are set within the classroom each day. The club that she continues to take a vested interest in is Proud Cause. Her assistance and initiative allow us to move forward with so many valuable projects. Shani drives with such determination and willingness to make a difference each day. I am grateful to the NJEA for making this recognition available. Our paraprofessionals are the unsung heroes in our schools. Their support is the reason our children are able to succeed in their mainstream classrooms, supported making friends on the recess field and assisted in their daily routines that would otherwise be overwhelming to our special needs children. They are the reason a child is provided with the executive functioning skills and personalized study skills, setting them up for college. They drive home the lessons teachers provide with motivation and a genuine love of our children. Shani, we have watched you work with students, reinforcing goals, generalizing lessons, and making a difference each day with not just the students you're responsible for, but for all the students in each classroom you step into. In addition, you provide educational support to each teacher that's been fortunate enough to work with you. Tonight, we recognize a profession that need not be overlooked. Tonight, we say thank you to you, Shani, for your initiative to make a difference each day at Mill Pond. I am so proud to work with you, and I could not be happier for you.
On behalf of Lacy Township Board of Education, you are a diamond in our community. For every child's life you've touched. Thank you.
Incredible teachers, and they just go above and beyond. It's amazing what I see each day in the classroom. And that's why I think that I do.
Thank you. Some family members are here, but like, you have that body taking pictures up there? You're always there with us. Thank you. Thank you. And one more. Best-selling author James Patterson has made it his mission to support school libraries across the United States. And in March, designated one point seven five million dollars, which would be granted to schools across our nation who are looking to develop their library programs. And so it is an honor to share with you that two of our media specialists took the lead to write a grant that Mr. James Patterson was offering. And so is thrilled to invite back up to the podium Mr. Brewer and Mr. Fiedler, who are going to tell us a little bit about their staff, who had an opportunity to not only take the initiative to write this grant, but also receive this grant.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony. So Mr. Brewer and I are very happy to recognize the efforts of our staff members in applying for and being the recipients of the James Patterson Scholastic Reading Club's Library Grant. And as part of an ongoing effort to keep books and reading a number-one priority in the United States, as Dr. Anthony said, our bestselling author James Patterson, together with Scholastic Reading Club, made a commitment to help save school libraries nationwide. This year alone, Dr. Patterson has personally donated a hundred seventy-five million dollars to school libraries nationwide with grants ranging from one thousand to ten thousand dollars to each of the four hundred and sixty-seven selected schools nationwide. Mr. Brewer and I are happy to announce that the Lenoka Harbor School and Forkett River School were two of those four hundred and sixty-seven schools. And at the Forkett River School, I would like to congratulate our school librarian, Mrs. Paris, for completing the grant application and being awarded three thousand dollars. So unfortunately, Mrs. Paris has family coming in for the holidays. She could not be here tonight. But I can tell you, she is very excited to place that order for those three thousand dollars worth of books. I would also like to recognize Mrs. LaGuardia, who I think I saw come in. Mrs. LaGuardia, are you here? Maybe she left. Mrs. LaGuardia, whose class participates in the Scholastic Book Club, brought to the attention of Mrs. Paris this grant. So two fine examples of staff members who go above and beyond for the students of the... Thank you, Dr. Anthony, and I'm happy to introduce Mr. Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Fiedler. Like Mr. Fiedler just said, Lenoka also was a recipient. Just like to tell you a quick story of how that came to be. Mrs. Carhart would come out and join us, please. Mrs. Carhart is our school librarian, and her name was submitted for her. And this is one of the reasons why I truly do value the Lenoka Harbor building, Lacy District overall. But at Lenoka, I really do value the people we work with. Because her name was submitted by her colleagues. Mrs. Jody Hughes, who works in our MD program, saw what Betty does for not only her students, but all the students throughout the building, from the literacy program that she created, where students go into other classes and help other students, to the special inclusion programs that she's put together, our book fairs, our literacy night, our summer reading kickoff. And I know I'm leaving out a bunch of others. But Betty is instrumental in our literacy initiatives at our school. And she received a thirty-five-hundred-dollar grant to further those as we go.
I just wanted to say, I was inviting Mr. Carhart. The first volunteer job I ever had in this district was I was volunteering for this wonderful library, Shelby Books, back when we used to sell books, right? So thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm thankful at this meeting to go back and volunteer.
We are going to take a brief intermission to let some of our students head home. And let's give them a nice round of applause. I see, I tell. We are just waiting for you. There are some seats up in the front row if you want to come and take a seat. That would be great. And we're going to start the second part of the meeting. I'd like to continue with the superintendent's report and I hope that you had an opportunity to pick up either an agenda and/or the superintendent's report. If not, you'll find them online.
Sir, we're locking the door. We're locking the door.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I want to recognize Malagro Claudio. Let me back up. Lenoka Harbor was responsible for both of our covers, so I want to thank Lenoka Harbor Artists, particularly Malagro Claudio, all fourth grade, Haley Zaretto, Madeline Morgan, Angela Mouchiri, and Emily Satello. So, thank you so much, Lenoka Harbor. You did an awesome job. I also want to recognize Sandy Nestrowitz, who is an occupational therapist and was honored by radio station B-95 as the recipient of the NJEA School Spirit Award. Congratulations, Sandy. In staff recognition, I would just like to offer a shout-out to new Dr. Desolier, who just finished her doctoral degree. Congratulations, Dr. Desolier. And I hope that you had an opportunity to see some of the concerts and certainly the high school play this season. The performances were incredible, everywhere from Forkett River to Milpon to the high school. I could go on about every one of our choruses and our bands. Our music teachers are so talented and they bring out the very best in our students and our musicians, so I want to recognize them. I also want to take a moment and let our parents know that during the week of January 11th, you'll be receiving a letter to give you information about the PARC test that your child took in the spring of 2015. So, you can look for that if you are a high school student. You can expect also to get some information a little earlier, probably January 4th. And beginning tomorrow, I invite you tomorrow morning to log on to our website where you'll get additional information. You'll see a video as well as parent resources if you're interested in PARC. I also want to just let you know that the Board of Education has a reorganization meeting on January 4th at 7:30 right here. With that being said, all of my monthly reports to the board are included and at this time I would like to invite Kathryn Perry from Jump Perry and Company to do this year's school audit and the presentation of the 2014-15 audit. Ms. Perry?
Good evening. I'm here to present the June 30, 2015 audit. It was formed in accordance with the rules of Jersey Department of Education. You're also required to have an audit done because you have bonds and also because you received grants, federal and state grants. So, as part of our audit, we issued three opinions. You all received an unmodified opinion for all three. Unmodified is a clean opinion. That means you had no issues. Part of the audit was testing requirements based on the Department of Education, which mean testing of payroll, testing of pensions, testing of your bids, testing of contracts, of awards of contracts. In all those tests, we had no issues. We also had to perform testing of your internal controls, how receipts or orders are placed and goods or materials are placed and how people put on payroll and of your internal control, we had no findings. We also had to do testing of your grants. You receive various state and federal grants and based on the awards and how much your expenditures were, we had to choose certain ones and do testing of those expenditures and of all the expenses required to be spent on those grants, we had no issues. They were proper, within the budget of the grant and had proper sign-offs and documentation attached, so we had no issues there. The report was required to be sent to the State of Jersey today, December 21st, which it was. We delivered it. We also had things uploaded, thanks to Mr. Savage and Ms. Leiser. They uploaded everything that was required to into the repository and into the required ALDS sum that had to be placed into the repository, so everything was fine. So, we had no issues and it was, I thank the business office, they did a great job. No one really likes the auditor to come and they'll be usually happy when we leave, so that was fine. We're used to that. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything on the audit. I met with the finance committee and we had a more in-depth discussion and we went over any of the issues or thoughts that we think needed to be discussed. Outside that, there was no problems. Okay?
I'd just like to say thank you for the extensive work. I read it.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much. Yes, you love it. Yeah, no one wants the excitement that the auditor does. It's kind of sad, but...
Thank you, Ms...
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also want to just mention that in addition to the High School Students of the Month, you'll also see the superintendent's report that we recognize middle school students as well, in addition to elementary students, but I do want to put a shout-out to Brianna Wickstead, our seventh grader from Lacy Middle School, who is being described as brightening the school. Travis Aguirre, who is new to our school district and is such a hard worker and willing to help everyone and takes his studies very seriously. Eighth grade student Mia Avenoso, who is our actress and our singer, and she has leadership qualities that are separating herself from the group, so congratulations Mia. And Chris Corman, an eighth grade student, who is described as caring deeply about his work and is being recognized for his drive for success. So, congratulations to them. President Terrell has asked me to recognize those donors to our school community and I'm just curious, is there anyone here who is on our donor list tonight? Okay. All right. So, I'm just going to go through the list and we are just so grateful for everything that our community does to think of us and so I will go through the list and the board will accept these donations rather in just a bit. The Taglin and Teddy Family Books, valued at 120 dollars. Mr. and Mrs. Robert Lawrence, who donated arts and craft supplies in the amount of 598 dollars to Cedar Creek School. Wells Fargo Bank, a donation check in the amount of 300 dollars to Cedar Creek School. Gail Marshall, children's books in the amount of 100 dollars to Forkett River School. Laura Boyd, 20 dollars of books to the Forkett River School. The Calasanti Family, children's books in the amount of 150 dollars to Lenoka Harbor School. The Downs Family, children's books in the amount of 250 dollars to Lenoka Harbor School. And the Martin Family, a learning game for 10 dollars in the amount of 10 dollars, rather, to Lenoka Harbor School. Christian De Sensa, a T-134 Multi-View Scientific Calculator in the amount of 25 dollars to Lacy Township Middle School. The Women's Club of Lacy, a donation check to the multiple handicap program in the amount of 1,300 dollars to the high school. The Rotary Club of Forkett River, a donation check to the drama club in the amount of 500 dollars to the high school. The Rotary Club of Forkett River, a donation gift card to Walmart for the multiple handicap program at Lenoka, rather, at the high school, for 100 dollars. A's Home and Garden Center, plants and liners for the main office lobby at the high school in the amount of 230 dollars. Lacy Walmart Supercenter, thanks to George Smith, the manager, a donation check for the marching lions in the amount of 250 dollars to the high school. The Center of Orthopedics and Sports Medicine, Dr. Daniel Fox, a donation check for game-ready ice unit for the athletic training room in the amount of 550 dollars to the high school. Sports Care Institute, Mr. Ron Lombardi, a donation check for game-ready ice unit for the athletic training room in the amount of 1,100 dollars to the high school. Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine, Dr. Robert Thompson, a donation check for the game-ready ice unit for the athletic training room in the amount of 1,595 dollars. Maureen Trento, a Keurig K250 coffee maker to the multiple handicap program in the amount of 120 dollars to the high school. And Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine, thanks to Dr. Robert Thompson and his staff for the holiday gift baskets for each school, transportation, and central office in the amount of 830 dollars. We thank you so much for your donations to our community. Before we continue and I finish my section of the agenda, it is an honor to ask Ms. Linda Downing to share a resolution that she has in her hand for some of our board members who will be leaving us after tonight's meeting. So, Ms. Downing, I'm sorry, Mr. Terrell taking over the meeting, but Ms. Downing, I wonder if you could help us?
I will.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with Mrs. Terrell. Mrs. Terrell, would you come up and stand up here by me, please?
Last time I have to do this, right?
Last time. And I'd like to read a resolution. Whereas Maureen Terrell has served two-year terms and as well as one-year term as a member of the Lacy Township Board of Education since April 2008, being re-elected in 2009 and 2013. And whereas Maureen Terrell has always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which she has been repeatedly elected by the voters of the Lacy Township School District. And whereas during her service to the Lacy Township Board of Education, she served as president of the Board of Education in 2015 and vice president in 2014. School Board delegate and has actively served as Chair of Negotiations, Policy, Safety, Security, LTASA Liaison, and as an active and contributing member of numerous committees of the Board. And whereas Maureen Terrell's background and experience in law as an attorney, as an advocate for children, as a law guardian, and as a trained mediator have been instrumental factors in the very challenging decisions that the Board of Education has made during her tenure. And whereas Maureen Terrell is well-respected by her fellow board members and in the community for her unwavering personal and professional commitment to improving the education for all students as a board member, a parent volunteer at Lenoka Harbor, and as a community member, and has a special place in her heart for special needs children. And whereas Maureen Terrell has always displayed fairness, integrity, and dignity in dealing with the issues presented to the Board, including making smart economic decisions and always fact-checking, and whereas Maureen Terrell was keenly focused on the achievements of students, past and future, and always reminded us why we are here, was steadfast and never wavered in making decisions for the students of Lacy Township as her first priority and always knowing that as a mom, the decision she has made provided a voice to the kids. And whereas Lacy Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for all children, a true friend of education as she always was seeking common ground. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Lacy Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the Board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless hours of volunteer service to the students and staff of the district and the citizens of Lacy Township during her seven years of dedicated service to the Lacy Township Board of Education. The Board does hereby formally acknowledge with deeply felt appreciation of time, effort, and sacrifices to her family and wishes her many more evenings and weekends of leisure to spend with her children, family, and friends. Dated this 21st day of December, 2015... the education for all students as a board member, a parent volunteer at Lenoka Harbor, and as a community member, and has a special place in her heart for special needs children; and whereas Maureen Terrell has always displayed fairness, integrity, and dignity in dealing with the issues presented to the board, including making smart economic decisions and always fact-checking, fact-checking; and whereas Maureen Terrell was keenly focused on the achievements of students, past and future, and always reminded us why we are here, was steadfast and never wavered in making decisions for the students of Lacey Township as her first priority, and always knowing that as a mom, the decision she has made provided a voice for the, to the kids; and whereas Lacey Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for all children, a true friend of education as she always was seeking common ground; and now therefore be it resolved by the Lacey Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the Board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless hours of volunteer service to the students and staff of the district and the citizens of Lacey Township during her seven years of dedicated service to the Lacey Township Board of Education. The Board does hereby formally acknowledge with deeply felt appreciation of time, effort, and sacrifices to her family, and wishes her many more evenings and weekends of leisure to spend with her children, family, and friends. Dated this 21st day of December 2015, Lacey Township Board of Education. Congratulations. And there's a plaque with the resolution on it, thank you, Maureen, for all her hard work and dedication. Again, thank you, Maureen. Whereas Eric Schubiger has served four continuous terms as a member of the Lacey Township Board of Education since April 2003, being re-elected in 2006, 2009, and 2012; and whereas Eric Schubiger has always displayed respect for the position to which he has been repeatedly elected by the voters of the Lacey Township School District; and whereas during his service to the Lacey Township Board of Education, he served as president of the Board of Education in 2013, '14, and 2007, 2008, and vice president currently in 2015, also 2012, 2013, 2011, 2012, 2006, 2007, and 2005, 2006. School board delegate and has active, delegate and has actively served as Chair of Finance and Operations, Policy, Township Liaison, Co-Curricular Health and Wellness, Transportation, and as an active and contributing member of numerous committees of the Board, including Strategic Planning and Referendum Committees. And whereas Eric Schubiger's professional background as a college professor of political science and a township administrator provided a unique perspective that the Board and administrators valued, along with his voice as a father of three and a husband of an educator; and whereas Eric Schubiger has worked tirelessly to ensure that public education in Lacey Township was high-quality and was affordable as he balanced his decisions for the taxpayer and the school community. And whereas Eric Schubiger cared deeply about civic engagement and listening to the people of the community, he is and always will be an advocate for students first, as he brought a forward-thinking mindset to every conversation. And whereas Eric Schubiger challenged school leaders to understand what the true meaning of student achievement is and what it should be; and whereas Eric Schubiger voiced concerns against unfunded mandates and the inadequacy of the New Jersey School funding formulas. And Eric Schubiger shared his love of Lacey as a 40-year resident, a Lacey graduate, a volunteer coach for numerous sports, and has served as a role model for others on how to serve one's community with pride; and whereas Lacey Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for Lacey students and a true friend of education. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lacey Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the Board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless hours of volunteer service to the students and staff of the district and the citizens of Lacey Township during his 12 years of dedicated service to the Lacey Township Board of Education. The Board does hereby formally acknowledge with deeply felt appreciation the time, effort, and sacrifices, and wishes him a respite from the Board, to share his newfound time with friends, family, and his beautiful children. Dated this 21st day of December 2015, Lacey Township Board of Education.
We are going to be asking Mr. Schubiger and Mrs. Terrell to take some pictures outside in the lobby after the meeting with their family, but at this time, I'd also like to ask Mrs. Terrell if she would share one more resolution with us this evening.
I can only do so that Mr. Savage will join. Okay. You know how much he loves the rhyme line. Come on, step up here with me. There you go. It's actually with great pleasure that I get to read this resolution for the whole community, because whereas 28 years ago today, on December 21st, 1987, the Lacey Township Board of Education received a resume from James J., or G. I should say, Savage Jr., which submitted for his candidacy as school business administrator, and after an extremely favorable interview, it says in quotes, "That you were appointed to be the school board administrator for Lacey Township." And whereas James Savage chose never to leave, nor did we ever want him to leave, and he has served 27 years as school business administrator and board secretary of the Lacey Township School District, displaying leadership, dedication, a desire to make our schools better with every decision he made. And whereas with administration and the nomination by others, James Savage received a distinguished service award, then was chosen by his peers for the highest honor as New Jersey Association of School Business Administrat-, uh, Business Officials Administrator of the Year in 2008, 2009, and you have served as a mentor for many new school business administrators, president of the Monmouth Ocean County School Insurance Fund Board of Directors, and was a member of both the Legislative Committee of New Jersey ASPO and Ocean County ASPO Scholarship Committee. And whereas James Savage was guided by a greater mission to always focus on what was important and a passion for doing what was right for Lacey School District, and helped others to see what he saw as the true purpose of his work. And whereas James Savage showed his expertise, with his keen eye to detail and his vision of the future, he witnessed significant growth and change in our schools, and has overseen the construction of two new schools, 11 school additions, the energy efficiency project, and a much-needed technology upgrade. And whereas James Savage put Lacey as a leader in transportation efficiencies, earning top ratings in the county, and has worked tirelessly to ensure that Lacey Township School District offered high-quality services; and whereas James Savage was responsible for all 650,0570 feet of facilities, 200 acres of land, transporting and providing meals for thousands of children and staff daily. And whereas Jim transitioned easily into working with a new superintendent and soon adopted her many new ideas, including the strategy of creating lists, for all that he cared about and for all that he did not. Whereas he honed the skill of saying no to her with exceptional speed and force. And whereas Jim spent countless hours crafting budgets for people who always expected him to make their budget wishes come true, and sometimes even tried to sneak in his own wishes, such as a shiny new dump truck, when no one was looking. And whereas James Savage shared his love of Lacey as a resident, as a father of two Lacey graduates, as a volunteer coach, and served as a role model for others who on how to serve one's community with pride. And whereas Lacey Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for children and residents here in Lacey Township. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lacey Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the Board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless hours of service to students and staff of our district and citizens of Lacey Township. During his 27 years of dedicated service to the Lacey Township Board of Education, the Board does hereby formally acknowledge and deeply, and with deeply felt appreciation, the time, the effort, and sacrifice, and wishes him a wonderful retirement from board business, buses, budgets, and freedom from a world of jumbled letters soon to have no meaning, such as GAAP, PIP, DRTRSs, CAFRA, AMR, AHIRA, RTK, and CUSAC. So hopefully you'll forget all of those. For, and we wish you time to relax on the golf course or enjoy sea breezes in warmer weather, enjoying every minute with your family and friends. Dated this 21st day of December 2015, Maureen Terrell, Board President, Lacey Township Board of Education. Congratulations. Unlike Eric and I, who get comment time, the board administrator doesn't get to comment. So I just want to say to Jim, I promise not to text him on nights and weekends anymore, and he does not have to return my calls after the end of the call, okay? But I just wanted to say just a word, if possible.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the years, the many boards I've worked with, superintendent, assistant superintendent that I've worked with over the years, my staff who, believe it or not, I couldn't accomplish any of these things without them. They're, they're the backbone, I told them that today. So, and I love my years here at Lacey, I'll never probably leave, I'll still be around. I'm sure my phone will keep ringing to ask me questions, but I love my time here, it's been my home. I appreciate everything that everybody has said about me. Thank you.
I forgot one thing, my daughter is here. So happy that she's here today. For goddamn, I'm very sorry.
Thank you for sharing him with us. Thank you, for 27 years.
So I'm going to ask you to put your hands together for one final round of thunderous applause for Thompson Healthcare, because they're here tonight and they donated not only tonight, but so much to our school community, and they're right over to my left. So we... Thank you. I'm so sorry I didn't see you, Thompson, I'm so sorry. You guys are awesome. I'll be in for a neck adjustment tomorrow. I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to you and your family, and a very Happy New Year. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Now we can all go home now. We'd like to, though, right? At this time, I would like to open the floor for a public comment. If you can raise your hand, there's a lot of people may not see you at first, but raise your hand, and I'll call on you, and you can come up to the podium and just state your name and address if you'd like to speak. So I'm gonna start over here, I'm gonna start looking, make sure I'm not missing anybody. Is there any hands? I see none, I will close the floor to public comment. At this time, I'll open the floor for board comment. And we'll start with Mr. Bigwell.
Thank you, President Terrell. I'll try and keep it short, because I know we've been here long, but I do need to take a few minutes. Obviously, congratulations to Shani McPherson, the students, just amazing work, amazing teachers, amazing opportunities in this town. Spent a couple of minutes, we're losing Eric Schubiger and Maureen Terrell. And I think it's important that we take a minute and think about the fact that these two people have dedicated a lot of time, Maureen, seven years, and Eric, 12 years. And I think I've said this before, this job is not a great job, it's very, very difficult. You know, people in this room are our friends, they are our community, it is, you know, a job where you have to make the tough decisions that affect our community and affect our friends. And so I, I recognize the fact that they've, that they've done this multiple times. They've taken the time out of their busy day. Maureen's an attorney, and Eric is a business administrator for, or township administrator. They both work extensively throughout the day, they then take time in their, in their spare time, I guess, and put it to good use for our community. So they truly are what the definition of a volunteer is. Jim Savage, obviously we just said a bunch about you, but thank you so much for everything you've done for this town, 27 years is, is quite impressive, and you've guided us through the good times, you've guided us through the bad times, and never left our side, so thank you very much. And I guess last but not least, keep in mind, obviously we all know this is the holidays, we are incredibly blessed when you look at the world, where we live, what we do, and what we have, we're incredibly blessed, hold your families tight this holiday season. Happy holidays to everybody, and we're looking forward to a great 2016.
Thank you. Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes, thank you. Season's greetings to all and best wishes for 2016, which will soon be upon us. Congratulations to the Students of the Month, Nevada Nicolet, Brendan Walsh, Michael Moller, and unsung hero Joseph Serrano, and congratulations to all the hard-working students that we honored here tonight. On Saturday, November 21st, I represented our board at the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly in Trenton. A resolution was passed that if any changes were made to charter school funding by the state, that expense should be covered by state funding, not at the expense of local public school districts. Everyone knows that state mandates often cause additional expenses to districts without the funding. Eric, I cast that vote with you in mind. Friday night, December 3rd, I attended the opening performance of the Drama Club play, A Christmas Carol, at the high school. It was a really great show, and Tiny Tim was especially cute. On Saturday morning, December 4th, I attended a parent symposium sponsored by the New Jersey School Board Association and the New Jersey PTA entitled, "What Will Impact Your Child's Education in 2016?" It was very informative. Kim Harrington from the New Jersey Department of Education spoke about the park exam and the state assessment standards. Then in the afternoon, the 4th grade choir from Cedar Creek performed at the Grounds for Sculpture in Trenton. Congratulations and thank you to all who made this wonderful experience possible for the students. I was very glad that I was able to attend this special event. The Grounds for Sculpture is a wonderful place for a day trip with the family during the holidays. Sunday, December 5th, was the Lacey Township Christmas Parade, the high school marching band was wonderful. So much hard work and practice goes into their performance, and they love doing what they do. Thank you to all the students, the parents, and the staff that make the marching band appearances possible. On December 15th, I was happy to be present when B98.5 gave the NJEA School Spirit Award to Occupational Therapist Sandra Nestowitz at Millpon. Congratulations to Sandy, and also to Mrs. McPherson for being selected as the winner of the Educational Support Person of the Year Award by the NJEA. Thursday night, this past December 17th, I attended the high school band and choir winter concert. They sounded so professional. Again, thank you to all the students and staff that made this special event possible. The winter formal dance on Saturday night, the gym was nicely decorated, and over 309th and 10th grade students enjoyed a beautiful night out. Great job by the SGA. We must now bid farewell to Mrs. Terrell and Mr. Schubiger, who have put in many hours and years of service to this district. Thank you both. And farewell also to Mr. Savage, best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement. That concludes my comments tonight. I want to thank the public and the staff that came out. Your input and presence at these meetings is very much appreciated. Mahalo, Meli Kukima.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you, President Terrell. I want to start out this evening by recognizing the reason why we are here, which is our students, Nevada, Brendan, Michael, and Joe Serrano. Congratulations on your achievements. The elementary stock market teams from all the elementary schools, what a phenomenal accomplishment. Some great stock picks in there, guys, so if you want to bolster up your... Some great stock picks in there guys, so if you want to bolster up your portfolio, take some of the advice that you learned tonight. The Lego engineers, great teams, great team names and congratulations on your achievements. Shaney McPherson, congratulations on your achievement this evening. I was fortunate enough in between college and getting into the IT field to become a permanent sub and be a special education substitute. And I can only imagine doing that for the length of time that you've done that, I know how strenuous it could be and how much time and effort it takes to put into that, so congratulations on your achievement. This district is blessed to have you as part of it. Ms. Paris and Ms. Carhart, thanks for your efforts in getting funds that were able to be donated to this school district as part of your efforts. All of what I just read is accomplished because of all of you sitting out there. I've said it again, I've said it in other meetings and I'll say it again. You know, a teacher's a mentor, a friend, you unlock students' passion to achieve their highest level of academics. So I understand your frustration and I see you all out here, know that. To Eric and Maureen, sitting out there on the other side and looking, you know, at you sitting on this board, it's easy to sit there and criticize and critique, but people don't realize the amount of time that you spend away from your families, the amount of time on nights and weekends that you don't get to participate in activities with your children. And I just want to thank you for your years of dedicated service to this school district. We may not have always agreed on things, but that's what's at the heart of this, is constructive criticism, constructive effort to make the best possible learning environment for our students. So I want to thank you for your years of service. And I'll conclude with Mr. Savage. 27 years of tireless effort and dedication and professionalism to this school district, you will be missed and I really hope that you enjoy your retirement and sit back and relax for once. And that'll conclude my remarks. So, wait, happy holidays. I think Mr. Bigwell pointed it out, we should all be thankful for what we have in this country and the way we're able to celebrate holidays with our families and friends, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McAboy?
Thank you. Every month I give a spotlight on graduates and this month I'd like to spotlight Anthony DiMartino. He graduated in 2006 from the high school. He will be graduating from the University of California Santa Barbara with a doctorate in bio- and organic photochemistry. In his spare time, he sings opera for the Santa Barbara Company. Matthew DiMartino, his brother, graduated in 2009 from the high school. He got his commission from West Point in 2013. He is a lieutenant and an engineer stationed in Fort Lewis, Washington. He's being deployed at the first of the year although his destination obviously is classified. So the DiMartino boys, we're very proud of both of you and Moya, their mother is here, she's a teacher at the Millpon School. And I want to wish Maureen and Eric good luck, I will miss working with both of you, you've both been giving me great advice and I know how much time you've put into this. So, congratulations, enjoy time with your families. The stock market was wonderful, Disney, I'm glad the kids invested in Disney because I also did last week, so hopefully it's good advice. Shaney, I've known you for many years, very proud of you, your devotion to the children and I'm very impressed with what your colleagues wrote about you, so congratulations. Jim, I've known you 17 years, we've been through a lot together, I won't have anyone to talk to at 6:30 in the morning anymore. You've given me great advice the last few years. Friend and I wrote you a poem, I was gonna read it but there's too many people here. It's called "Twas the Night, 'Twas the Night at the Last Board Meeting," so you can read it tonight in your spare time, I'll pass it down. It's all about your time on the board and I want to wish everybody happy holidays and enjoy the time with your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing?
Okay, first of all, I want to apologize for being late, I was at my holiday concert in our school, so I watch all the awards on TV, so I want to put a blanket congratulations to everyone who received the award tonight. I want to say thank you to Lenoka Harbor for doing grandparents' day again, this was my third one and it's my favorite day of the year and it was so sweet and all the work that the teachers put into it, as well as all the work that so many of you put together in your own classrooms to make the holiday season festive and bright for our students and the shows, so we thank you, I thank you, we thank you, because we as a team, not I, thank you for all your efforts and for making the holidays so bright for so many children. Eric, Maureen, we're gonna miss you, you're a staple on this board, we can congratulate you and wish you a lot of rest and relaxation. I did not acknowledge and I apologize for that, I see Eric's family over here, if you could give them a round of applause. Three boys and his wife and his mother-in-law, his wife who we took him away from for how many years, 12 years, so he's all yours now.
12 years, 8 months.
How many minutes? And I know Scott Joel is here also, but I don't know if he's in the room. Scott?
It's in all of it.
Thank you, Scott, for sharing her, thank you. Jim Savage? I have spent 24 years with this gentleman, it's like, almost like a marriage.
I did better with you than my first one.
Okay, back to Jim. I've known him on a professional level, he has helped me through so many budgets, 24 budgets, trying to teach me, going through everything every year, but more importantly than that, he has become a dear friend and confidant. I don't, a few years ago, I don't know what I would have done without this man, he was truly a true friend to me and I can't thank him enough for his friendship and his professionalism in Lacy schools. We're gonna miss you terribly and you're not gonna know how much we miss him until after he's gone and realize what he has done for this district. So best of luck to you. And comedy will be gone too. And I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday, please keep the servicemen and women in your thoughts and prayers that are not home right now and enjoy your families and enjoy your children. Happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you. And for the last time, Mr. Eric, or Vice President Schubiger, would you like to comment?
Absolutely, thank you, President Terrell. Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, as usual, what a night to celebrate our students, because as my colleagues up here have said, that is the real reason we're here. It was an eventful evening to have a packed house here for the December meeting. I have to say, my recollection, if it serves me well, we typically don't have this type of attendance for a December meeting, so I'm happy to see it. I know there's a lot of things that we're dealing with in public education these days that all of you in this room are dealing with. I wish you all the best of luck and although I'm not gonna be up here as a school board member any longer and with that, I take that position with a lot of pride, it's very difficult. The only position that is a greater responsibility for any of us is the position of citizen. So I am looking forward to getting back to that position as a citizen and hopefully an engaged citizen for years to come. So, I think it was, I think it was Mr. Giordano that said it, but you often hear when people talk about others about, we did have our disagreements and, you know, that's how we work, you need to have that. And I gotta tell you, with me, I think, I didn't agree with anybody for about 12 and a half years and that's just kind of how I operate and sometimes I disagree just because I wanted to get some conversation going. So that's not, that's very true.
You told me, Mr. Schubiger.
I think you knew all along, that was my, anyway. So the amount of conversation we've had up here, the amount of people that I've been working with for so long, it's really been interesting for me because as a graduate and Jim, I gotta tell you, I hate saying this, Jim Savage, I was still in high school when he was the business administrator. I had to say though, because if you can dish it out, you gotta be able to take it.
Was that your graduation or?
You were at my graduation. 1991, alright, so, okay. A couple of things I want to say, I think when I started here, working with this board and the administration, I had this idea that, you know, the school district gave me 13 years and I wanted to give some time back. I felt that it was sort of my duty, my obligation. I didn't think I'd be here for almost 13, giving all of it back in some fashion, but it wound up being 12 months, excuse me, 12 years, 8 months, about 2 weeks and 3 days, something like that. Just because the election moved, it kind of wound up being an off year. So, but what I found was, I learned just as much being up here about being a part of a group that had a great responsibility and I think, I take away my time here really to give to me, I hope I gave something back to the community, but for me, it was a gift. So, you know, and it's funny, in this resolution, I had a, I was paying attention, believe it or not, I don't like being the center of attention, getting an accolade, but sometimes you talk and you talk so much, you wonder if people are listening still. And when I read it, apparently some of the things I keep saying over and over, it got people's attention because it made it in the resolution. So yes, the unfunded mandates still drive me crazy and I'm sure it drives all of you crazy on occasion. The fact that student achievement is measured by a test score still drives me crazy when I see all these students up here achieving in so many different ways, that's what we should be celebrating and talking about. And although I'm quite certain that our legislators at the highest level of our government were not paying attention to me for the past 12 and a half years, 12 years, 8 months, the fact that just a couple of weeks ago, the legislation that was passed, changing really the future, I hope and I believe, of public education, you know, people that have listened to me for the past several years know how interested in government I am and I'm sort of a true American federalist, I guess, in that giving power back to the states and that home role, local role is so important to make our communities better and I think we lost that for quite some time, especially with public education. This new legislation that's coming down, it gives power back to the states and it gives power back to all of us at the local boards. So again, although I had no impact on that probably, the fact that it's happening makes me feel a little bit better about how I felt for so long. So I hope that's a step in the right direction for all of our kids. And everybody out here in this room, we are teachers, we tend to teach and we tend to talk, I know I talk all the time, I'm a talker and that's important for what we do, we need to teach, we need to talk, but I think sometimes we need to listen and we need to learn just as much as we teach and we talk. So that whole idea of being sort of a teachable moment, maybe we need to have more some learning moments, all of us. I think making sure we do that will help our communities so much better in the long run. And as I said, I'm not gonna be up here, but I will be engaged with this community. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's how much we love our community, right? That's why we're here and my husband's hiding in the hallway with my teenage sons, so I have to give them a shout out because it's really his fault or his idea why I even decided to take the hardest volunteer job I ever had. So I always explain to people, you have to run for a volunteer job and it seems crazy and it is, but when you love your community, this is what you do, right? And everybody who's sitting in this room should give yourself a round of applause because you're here because you love the children in this town and therefore you love our community because that's what Lacy Township's really about, right? It's not about anything else. And people who've come over the years will always hear me say this, right? It's about the kids and the parks, so it's really about our families, that's what Lacy is. We're not a big metropolis, we're not anything, we're all here, we all moved here because this was a safe, wonderful environment to raise kids and I think we raised very good kids together, as you saw tonight, from age 4th grade all the way up through seniors, too many children to name, I want to congratulate them all, but what we have to also understand is behind all that student achievement are wonderful families and their teachers who are supporting those children and they are administrators who are supporting the programs that help those children. So yet again, we raise good children and we raise great achievers, as you heard, Mrs. McAboy always shares that and I think that just helps ground us of just things we wouldn't even think about accomplishing. And these children are leaving our community as, with that Lacy pride and roaring all across the nation, so it's just impressive. I have to thank all the board members I've ever worked with, you think you know what you're doing when you come on here and you don't, I'm just telling you, it took me a good couple of years, thank God for all the patience of the board members I served with in the past and all the patience of the current board members. I have to give a special shout out for Mrs. Downing who has mentored many a board member in her time, right? Oh, yeah. And, and Mr. Schubiger who's been my running mate a couple of times and just both of them were very helpful in understanding, you know, what a new board member goes through and helping to educate me and helping me, show me the way. I want to thank all the current board members who have been working on all the different things. I know many of the staff have seen me in many different roles and many different committees and the one thing that I appreciated about spending all my Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday nights in committees, so I couldn't even go to all the wonderful activities we're doing, is I got to meet a lot of staff, I got to meet a lot of administrators who made this district work and that made it worth it to me. So thank you for all that you do, for all that you bring to our community. I have to thank Dr. Anthony for all of her hard work and assistance along with Dr. Clark and Mr. Savage who take my phone calls and my texts at any hour of the day or night and that's what I say to Mr. Savage, he'll be so thrilled to not have to answer that cellphone anymore. And what we just need to remember as we're all here today is not only how fortunate we are to have a community that cares about us, but how wonderful our students are and what we can offer them. So thank you for being here tonight and have a very happy holidays and a peaceful and joyful 2016. And with that...
I apologize, I need a mulligan here, real quick. My wife is still, she, I think we have to pick her up off the floor because she saw me get emotional in public.
Me too.
I apologize, but it's how I feel. Thank you to my family for putting up with it for so long. Jim, you are an outstanding administrator, I appreciate all of your efforts. Being Business Administrator of the Year for the entire state of New Jersey is nothing to sneeze at. Obviously not many get it, we have had one of the best for a very long time and we've been very fortunate. I think his efforts are often overlooked and we will realize that shortly, but I hope we already do. And to my running mate for a couple of those years, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure to work with you. To the administration and the board, we work as a team and as Mr. Giordano said, we don't always agree. I quip about how I disagree with everybody all the time, which is really not a quip because it's true, but we don't and, but we work together, we figure it out and there are some tough nights, but for all the good times, for the tough times and even for... But for all the good times, for the tough times, and even for the really, really tough times, I have no regrets. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And one final comment in regard to Mr. Savage. I don't know if you all got this, there were no findings in the audit, so he is going out, as he always does, showing us all what a wonderful job he's done for our district. Now we have to get on with business, unfortunately. But, looking at page thirty-seven. At this time, I will be... I'm just looking at my cheat sheet here. When I'm at public hearing for bond refinancing, I'm asking for a motion to open for public hearing, the refunding of the 2006 bond.
Move.
And all, can I do it all in favor? All in favor? For that motion to open, all in favor? Board members?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed? We're now opening for a public hearing in regard to the refinancing of the 2006 bonds, and Mr. Stein, our board attorney, has a statement to read to the public.
The board tonight will be considering a resolution to adopt a refunding bond ordinance which will authorize the issuance of refunding bonds. The refunding bonds will be issued to refinance the previous 2006 refunding bond. The current 2006 refunding bond was issued in 2006 to refund bonds that were originally issued in 2001. The 2001 bond funds were used to partially fund, along with a large money grant from the state, additions, renovations, and site improvements to the high schools, Mill Pond, Lenoka Harbor, Cedar Creek, and Forkett River Elementary Schools. A significant savings was achieved through the 2006 refunding, but the 2006 refunding bond now has interest rates which are higher than the current market rates. The purpose of this current refunding bond is to reduce the bond interest expense on the balance of the bonds that will be paid in the future. This is the board's first opportunity to undertake this type of a refunding for the 2006 refunding bonds. The current 2006 refunding bonds have maturity dates in 2017 through 2026. The outstanding principal balance of the 2006 refunding bonds is $17,770,000. The average interest rate on the 2006 refunding bonds for the remaining years 2017 through 2026 is 4.37 percent. It is anticipated that the interest cost of these new refunding bonds will be about 2.6 percent. This process of issuing the refunding bonds is similar to refinancing a mortgage on a home at a lower interest rate. The term of the bonds will not be extended by the new refunding bonds. All of the original 2001 bonds will be still paid off by 2026 as originally planned. It is anticipated that the total savings that will be achieved through this current refunding bond will be approximately $1.6 million over the last ten years of the life of the bonds. This averages to a savings and interest cost of about $160,000 per year. So to summarize, in December 2000, the voters of Lacy Township voted to adopt a referendum authorizing the selling of bonds by the school district to support renovations to almost all of the schools. And in 2006, those bonds were refunded, they were recast at a lower interest rate than was available in 2001, and money was saved by virtue of doing that. The first opportunity to do it again is right now, 2015, which will actually occur in 2016. And there will be, the ordinance is adopted by the board tonight, there will be a refunding of those 2006 bonds, adding much lower interest rate, a reduction of over 2 percent as anticipated, with a savings each year to the board and the taxpayers of about $160,000 in interest cost. Putting that together, over ten years, would be a savings to the board and the taxpayers of $1.6 million. That's the purpose of this public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor for public comment, just in regard to the refunding of the bond. Seeing no hands, I will close the floor to public comment. Do I have a, and just to, so the public understands, we're actually going to be voting on the motion to refund the bond on page thirty-eight, and that's E. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. At this time, we'll move to new business. Do I have a motion for items under new business, A through M?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes on everything with the exception of B.
Pick which letter?
B is a void.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Page forty-one. Do I have a motion in regard to program and curriculum?
Page forty.
Oh, forty? Sorry. Oh, I missed that. On page forty, do I have a motion to accept the donations as previously?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes, and thank you to everyone.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes, and on behalf of the whole Lacy Township Board, I thank you.
In regard to, on page forty-one, programs and curriculum, do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes.
On the same page, professional days, item A, do I have a motion?
Move.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes.
On page forty-two, certified personnel, do I have a motion for A through R?
Move.
Second. I just want to make sure I had it. Okay, thank you. There was a second.
Yes.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes.
On page forty-four, do I have a motion for support on certified staff personnel?
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes, and thank you to everyone.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes.
And at this time, Mr. Stein, do you have an add-on motion?
There are three head-on motions. The first one is request that the board adopt a motion, move that the board ratify the administrative leave of employee A, effective as of December 11, 2015, and until further notice from the superintendent of schools or the board of education.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes.
And at this time, Mr. Stein, do you have an add-on motion?
There are three head-on motions. The first one is request that the board adopt a motion, move that the board grant a leave for good cause with pay for four days for bereavement purposes to employee C.
Move.
Second.
I'm just getting a clarification. Four is correct. Four is correct. Roll call?
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Stein, do you have anything for us?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any other business? Hearing no other business, it is my pleasure to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and thank you all. Good night, happy holidays.